Okay. And then these three, then these three years here, and then that's when he got the discount.
And that's when he got the discount. So if you didn't pay long some, you got the discount.
That's what I need to tell him.
We're streaming, we're streaming live.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, they did it. Ron, they did get it.
Okay.
I'll call them tomorrow.
Are they ready now? We checking?
It says live.
I call the Norton City Council Committee Work Session for Monday, February 5th, 2018 to order. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gainer?
Here.
Mr. McLoane?
Here.
Mr. Corran?
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Mr. Pilot?
Mr. Pilot's excused tonight. We're going to begin with the committee work session, general topics of discussion, letter A, Tax Incentive Review Council appointments, Mr. Towesley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council is charged with naming someone to this council. Actually, I think we're supposed to name two, but once, we've already have one that potential.
Potentially, yeah, I can fill in a little bit. This, this council's required because of the abatement that was given to KDA a couple of years ago. So it's a council that, council appoints part of it, the mayor appoints part of it, and then there's county officials that are also a part of it. And you're supposed to review the agreement with the company to make sure they're living up to their obligations that they have in their agreement to go along with the abatement. So it's just an annual review that needs to be done.
And this is on a voluntary basis?
It's a voluntary basis, that's correct.
And this is separate from the other?
That's correct. So there's, what Ms. Whipke brought up at the end of last year, which is the Income Tax Review Board, that's a separate board that would be required to, if someone were to appeal the determination of income tax that they owe the city, that gives them the due process, the hearing to have that appeal right. So that's a separate board, doesn't mean it's frequently. This Income Tax, this Tax Incentive Review Commission, Committee is required to meet every year, and that's the more time-pressed one, but the Income Tax Review Board also has to be filled. But they are separate boards.
All right.
Mr. President, so do we actually have somebody for this? Or we have somebody for the Income Tax Review Board?
The, the name that I put forward last year was for the Income Tax Review Board.
That's what I thought.
So on this one, we would need how many appointments for this Tax Incentive Review Council?
Two, yeah, two.
Two?
Yeah, that's what.
All right, so we need two people for that one.
Yep.
All right, are there any specific qualifications? Resident of the city, is that all that's needed?
You can just, Mr. Fowler, you can just talk, okay. Yeah, but I could, I will, what I'll do, there are requirements, but I will, I'll, it's statutory, so I'll just make sure you have in the statute, highlight the relevant language, so you know. I don't want to speak out loud, turn and tell you the wrong advice on the floor. So I'll send you a follow-up email.
So we, so we don't really know what this is?
Well, you need to have two people, they have to be human, we know that. I would probably pick residents, probably voting age, right? I mean, basic things like that, if we can get, there's no requirements for ward, ward representation or anything like that, we just need to find people who are willing to volunteer and serve.
No idea why they have to be registered to vote or anything like that?
I don't think it says registered voters, but I'll double-check that, Mr. Towesley.
And you'll just give us a memo or something?
I'll shoot you an email first thing tomorrow morning, just with those requirements, just so you know exactly what you need. So I apologize, I wasn't prepared to talk about that specifically.
Excuse me, Joe.
Yes.
Before you go ahead.
Uh-huh.
So the PDF we got, Carrie, is not the correct PDF today?
It's for a different cause, it's for down later on top, under your...
Okay.
Topics for next work session or the appointments to boards and commissions.
I did read through that, and it does list the qualifications for that particular.
I could probably pull up my phone, but I'd rather just do an email and not speak out loud, turn.
Mr. Towesley, anything else for that, that's your committee, so?
No, I suppose just, you know, for every council member, if you, if you can think of anybody who you might think would be interested, it'd be great.
All right, then we'll go ahead and just put this on to the next work session agenda again. We'll have the information, hopefully we can, I think this is more pressing, we need to get this thing filled.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else on Tax Incentive Review Council? All right, hearing nothing then. B, Water Project nomination to O E P A. Ms. Whipke, that's yours, and utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have no idea what this is about. We've received nothing on it. I'm going to go ahead and skip, same thing with C, this is my committee, but I haven't the slightest clue of what this is about to even have a discussion or ask anything at this point. I, I'm not going to accept this, I want to have the information on this, so I know what I'm talking about when I come up here. This is unacceptable.
Are you then, as Chair, the Chair of the Committee just asking, does this be set over to the next work session?
Yes.
All right.
Both.
And we'll have the information by then?
Well, I, the purpose of putting it on the agenda is, historically, we would submit an ordinance. But prior to drafting the ordinance, I thought we would have a discussion at City Council so as to not waste time creating these ordinances, so we can understand the direction of council. Like, we, we spent time creating three ordinances last week, which was fine, and we didn't move forward. So rather than do that, I thought we could have a discussion at City Council about grant applications that we were seeking to apply, and that's why I asked them to be put on the agenda.
Was there, I mean, is there any background information or anything like that?
First of all, I need to know if council's willing to apply for grants before we put in a bunch of legwork, especially because the sensitivity with infrastructure projects.
I'm, I'm always willing to apply for free money.
But, but I have heard from some council people regarding a specific project that there's not an interest if, if we cannot get someone else to pay for it. So it brings the question of, how does this council want to bring forward these type of questions without knowing the direction council wants to take? When I've been given mixed signals from various council people. And it makes it difficult from administrative standpoint to bring an ordinance forward when we don't know how, how the council wants to proceed.
And I can't speak for anyone else, and I won't speak for anyone else, but I will speak for myself in that my preference is, is that we have the background information, how much is the grant, what, what's the grant proposed for, whether that's in a memo, whether that's just some paperwork, so that we have something to look at, and then we can say, yeah, that sounds good. I, I'd like to apply for a grant for whatever, I don't know what, what this is for. Or, thank you for the information, but no, I'm not interested, and then we go from there.
And I totally agree with that.
Otherwise, I mean, you know, otherwise, we'll have that, we'll have the discussion, then we're going to bring it back, and we're going to look for the information, and then we're going to bring it back for some ordinances. So it would just make sense, at least from my point of view, and at least for the committees that I'm on, I'd like, I'd like that background information ahead of time. I, like I said, if anybody else has a different idea of what they'd like to see, by all means, let's, let's give the, the administration the direction that they're asking for, so that they know what we want, so that going forward, it's very early in the year, going forward, we know how this is going to work.
I feel the same way. If I'm, I don't like coming in here and looking at something, and I have not the slightest idea what this is even referring to, I want the background information as well, or I won't move it forward.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Gainer?
I, I read this, Mr. Fowler, and, and Exhibit A says, where is it? I'm lost again. About a water line. Am I, I am in the right spot, am I not, or am I just lost again, as usual?
You're talking about F.
What you just talked about.
B and C, we don't have anything on B and C.
I do, I, I have...
That's, that's F.
Soon as I find it here.
It's F.
Exhibit A was go with F.
With the, what we were just talking about, right?
That's the one tonight, later on. Something else.
I'm lost, as usual.
So Robert, there's nothing in the packet for B or C?
That'll be correct.
Correct, okay, there's nothing in the packet.
All right, well, you know, are there any other comments regarding this? Ms. Whipke, I'm sorry, are you just asking to move this on to the next committee work session, then?
Yeah, get us information, and then we'll go through it again.
For B and C?
Yes.
All right, on to D. Purchase of police cruisers, Mr. McLoane?
I'm sorry, what?
We're on to D, purchase of police cruisers.
Okay, sorry, sorry. All right, yes, um, Chief would like to purchase two vehicles. They're budgeted, correct, Ron? And he'd like to replace car 69 and 64. He's got some proposals here from three different cars, places, and he said Fred Martin had the best price. And he'd like to purchase, within the next several months, two 2018 Dodge Chargers, and utilize them as marked police vehicles, and then the third vehicle later on, we'll talk about that later, down the road, he's anticipating purchasing sometime this summer, so. Anything I missed out, Ron, or, or Robert?
I, I believe that's correct, Mr. McLoane, he's, he's looking for two. And I believe later this summer, then he wants to replace the detective's vehicle, which I think he talked about at budget time. But that'll be later this summer, that car has a lot of miles on it, too, and as you can see, 69.
Right.
The Jeep Wrangler has 109,000 in that, but we're getting a very good trade-in from the Fred Martin on that.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that.
The age and the amount of miles.
Yeah. Anyone?
And this would be coming out of, remember the Fund 140?
Yes.
That we're taking income in?
Yeah.
For, from the roads?
Right.
That's where this is coming out of.
Mr. Fowler?
The, just to clarify, the 140 fund is strictly a charge for the rental of the police car. There is no salary that is deposited in that fund. It is strictly the rental of the police car at a cost per hour. That money, plus the towing fees, go into the 140 fund that accumulate to make these purchases. And just for clarity, we're getting, essentially, we're buying two vehicles for the price of one, which, as you look at the capital plan that we're putting forth, we're turning those vehicles over quicker, so as we get a better trade-in price, so that the lower maintenance costs, they're under warranty for approximately three years, during which that we have the vehicle, all those things help to reduce our cost for service.
And plus, I think that's generally the expected time period for when a police car should be, should be turned in and get something new. And those rentals were, or the rental is for when the police are out on 76 or wherever they are, and they're helping to direct traffic and stuff like that.
Yeah, $20 an hour rental, and that goes into that fund, plus towing.
Okay.
I, I do have a question. I just want to be assured that both of these vehicles are the most worn, I guess would be the right word, the two most worn vehicles in the fleet.
I can't say that the Dodge is the, the Charger is the most worn. I can say it's the most veh, the vehicle we need to trade in the most.
Okay. Meaning, or don't you want to elaborate?
I would just rather say that's the vehicle we need to trade in the most. And, and I think one of the other side, important aspect of this, all the equipment from the current vehicles will transfer over to the, to the new vehicles. I don't know if that was articulated.
Could I maybe make a request of the chief? He's done this in the past, but I think it's been a year or so, that he get us a list of all the cars and where they stand, just for our knowledge?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kernan?
Ms. Whipke?
Are we looking to purchase one or two? I thought it was two.
We're purchasing two, it's two different ordinances.
But, oh, it is?
Yes, there's ordinance five and ordinance six.
Ordinance five and ordinance six.
Okay.
And, and how soon would these be delivered, once we, we pass the ordinance? And are you looking, how many, is this an emergency, does it need to be done now?
No, we, we allowed them to go three readings, we planned for them, and I believe their emergency language was eliminated, so therefore, it'll be 30 days after passed by council.
Okay, so, probably about 60 days from now, since we have two more meetings, and then 30 days to wait, but that's okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we know we need them, and we've already put it in the budget.
Well, I think what the chief did is, I thought, sometimes we rush things, this way, he's planning ahead, so we can do our three readings. I think that was the reason. I'm, that's, am I correct?
That's correct.
So.
Plus, maybe we'll be outside of the salt and the snow by the time we get there.
Never thought of that, thank you.
Possibly. It is Ohio.
Any, anyone else up here?
Mr. McLoane, that, we also have to bring this to border control, too.
Okay.
This has not gone to border control yet.
Right.
Okay, so, so I'll put it on for the 12th, and then you guys will probably have a border control that day. Okay, with that said, I'd like to put ordinance five, 2018, this is an ordinance to purchase a 2018 Dodge Charger, police cruiser, for the police department, at a cost not to exceed $15,000, and put it on for February 12th council meeting.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McLoane?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
And also, I'd like to, ordinance six, 2018, an ordinance to purchase another 2018 Dodge Charger, police cruiser, at a cost not to exceed $16,000. I'd like to get that on the first, first reading, council meeting, February 12th.
That your motion?
Yes, it is.
And I'll second that.
Call the roll.
Mr. McLoane?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Right. And on to letter E, which is walking path grant application. That is in finance, would fall to Mr. Pilot, he's not here, so it would fall to me. And I know that there was information in here. So I will turn it over to Mr. Fowler.
Okay, I, just this morning, received a updated map I'll hand out, but there are three locations of funding that we would, we are seeking for a multi-phase project. The map I'm going to hand you, I'll hand it out quickly. So, once everyone has a copy of the map, there should be plenty of copies, one, should be one for the clerk as well. What you have there is Columbia Woods Park. You can see there are two, one red line and one blue line, that are encompassed with a squiggly line. We have prepared a multi-phase walking trail path plan for Columbia Woods Park. The first phase would be the two areas that are highlighted, essentially giving us one disability access to the far baseball field from the shelter, the Kiwanis Shelter. And then also, get, looping it back around to the existing playground. The idea is eventually to have over a mile walking path throughout the Columbia Woods Park. The three grants, one is a CDBG grant from Summit County, the second is the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works Grant, and lastly, there's a local foundation grant for $15,000 that we'll be seeking money from those funds to make these improvements.
Is this asphalt?
I'm...
Usually they are.
Normally, they would be, I think the one for CDBG will be concrete, because it's for disability access.
Okay.
But the others will be asphalt.
Okay.
And if you could, what's the city's match, and, I mean, how is it, is there a match? And, you know, how does that work?
On the Nature Works Grant, the match is 25%. I believe the, the request is for 50,000. However, the in, the match can be in-kind, meaning labor, the, the street department might perform in the park, et cetera, to remove trees. That would all count towards the grant.
I think I remember reading that in the information, okay. So we could count that in as part of our match?
As part of our match, yes.
Okay. And then for the other grants, those, there's no match required for those?
No match for those.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Gainer?
Mr. Fowler, if there's, I see you've applied for, or you're going to apply, if, okay, for $50,000 grant, just starting with the yellow lines, right?
Those are existing, the yellow are existing sidewalks in the park.
So which are the first ones that you're planning on doing, then?
There'd be the red here.
The dark red.
The dark red here, and the blue, they're outlined in the squiggly lines, I'm sorry.
Okay. And, and is it of your, are you of the opinion that $50,000 plus our 25% in-kind will pay for that that you've indicated there? Or is it going to be more?
EDG and I had that discussion today, honestly. And that's why we were trying to figure out, combined, it's $90,000 plus our 25% match of the 50, which is about 12.5, roughly. And so we're looking at about 100-plus thousand, 112,000, or 102,000. I, I think that'll be substantial to just get the first phase.
For this first phase?
For first phase, yeah.
112,000, approximately, okay?
Approximately, yes, sir.
So, and that includes our 25% in-kind, okay? So, so our share of this is going to be 25% of the total 112, am I right?
No, it's 25% of 50.
Just, just the one portion?
Just the one portion, the other portion, the CDBG grant does not require a match, and the foundation does not require a match. But I will put in the grant application that we're seeking other funds to complete the, complete the full circle. So, you know, we're leveraging three funds essentially against each other.
Okay.
Or for each other.
If I could, while we're on this subject, this map doesn't show it, but if you go to the, the southern and easternmost portion of Columbia Woods Drive, which is inside the apartment complex, there's a building on the left-hand side of the street that faces Columbia Woods Drive at the very dead end of it. It's, it's behind the baseball field that is in the Acme complex, okay? The northernmost baseball field in the Acme complex. If you walk that sidewalk towards Acme, down Columbia Woods Drive, the sidewalk dead ends at approximately the end of the building, the last building on the left on Columbia Woods Drive. If you look diagonally to your left and walk behind the end of the building, about 80 feet, approximately I stepped off, and then veer to the right, towards the baseball diamond, the right-field fence of the baseball diamond, there's a path that's already worn through there, about three foot wide. I would suggest that when we apply for grants, for handicapped, accessible grants, that it include enough to do a sidewalk, in conjunction, of course, with the apartment owners and Acme, if that's necessary. I'm not sure if we own the other side of that path, or if Acme does.
Oh, that's an Acme property.
Okay, even the baseball field itself is?
Yes.
Okay, well then, I, I would suggest that yourself, maybe, or you and the mayor, perhaps, could speak to the apartment owners and see if they would be willing to provide par, partial funding for the sidewalk that I'm talking about, and that would give all apartment dwellers, which would be a good incentive to rent those apartments if you knew you had a handicapped access to the shopping center from those apartments. And I mean, any place in the apartments, you could go to Acme Plaza through that one little short sidewalk. Then, also, Acme, it would increase, hopefully, their business, or add to their business. So I, I would hope that Acme, as a good corporate citizen that they are, and the apartment complex, I've been, as far as I know, a good corporate person, they would help contribute to that, and we could run that sidewalk on through there and give all handicapped people with wheelchairs, walking, or whatever, access to the Acme Plaza. Now, I don't know where the entrances are going to be to Acme, whether they're going to close off the middle, I don't know what their plans are, but I would hope that they'll have access from the back of the plaza. And this would give especially handicapped people in wheelchairs and, you know, those type of carts, they could shoot right through there to get groceries, or, you know, they could walk through or anything else. Just an added incentive for the, for the apartment complex, and all these people that live in those apartments are also our citizens. And since we're making a walking path for people to just walk, which I'm in favor of, I think it would be absolutely a, a good idea to give those same people who are going to be walking, access to the, to the plaza. Just keep it in mind when you apply for the grants. For the other ones.
Thank you, Mr. Gainer. As far as seven, eight, nine, what's our, what are we looking at as far as timeline on those?
The one foundation grant is an April deadline.
Okay.
ODNR's deadline is May 1st, I believe. They, they moved it, it used to be March 1st, but I think it's May 1st now, but I'll confirm that. And I am not certain of the CDBG grant deadline at this point, they have not made it. Is it June? It's June.
All right. Any other discussion regarding these?
Yeah, just one, I assume, Ron, this will come out of the Parks Fund that we get from Time Warner Cable or something, is that, since it's a park?
I haven't really had a chance to talk with Robert or...
Would the money be coming out of the, probably the park fund?
I mean, my intention was to use the in-kind services of our labor in the parks during the summer to match, so there wouldn't be any, there would be no money.
Oh, no money from us?
Right, the in-kind labor for our employees, cutting down the trees and doing the work in the, the clearing, I accounted for that to be our match.
Kind of preparation work?
Pardon, sir?
Prep work?
Yeah, prep work, yeah.
Okay.
So I, I really wasn't intending to have to match.
Okay.
Our match was going to be our labor.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Any other questions or comments? And these are ordinances seven, eight, nine, correct? If I'm looking at them correctly? Seven, eight, nine, okay. I will then move to place ordinance seven on the next council agenda for a first reading.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
I move to place ordinance number eight, 2018, on the next council agenda for a first reading. reading.
No second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
And I move to add ordinance nine, 2018, to the next council agenda for a first reading.
No second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
All right. Letter F is in, oh, Finance again, I guess that's mine again. All right. Mr. Messner?
This basically is a, an amendment to the appropriations to actually appropriate additional funds in the 126 Fund. You can see the actual fund and expense line. We need to revise the budget presently, there's $3,000. We need to revise it to 75 to pay the cost of engineering for a water design, waterline design.
Is this something that we didn't know about when we did the budget before?
I was not aware of it. I apologize for that. I don't know if...
It came to light when we became aware of the grants that are available, and we have to do some preliminary engineering work to score better on the grants.
And these are the grants that we're looking at the next time?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So this is all tied together?
Correct.
All right. So since we're looking at the grants the next time, we can probably look at this the next time. Yes?
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't seem...
We'll have all the information.
It doesn't seem to make any sense to talk about this unless we're, we know what direction we're going on that. Any comments from council about that? Does that make sense? All right, then we'll just move this on to the next work session agenda, along with would be B and C. Okay, unfinished business, letter A, paving of Brookside, Little, and Shellheart. Mr. Karen?
Sorry, I haven't really heard a whole lot more about this since we brought up last meeting. Is there any more news on that, Mr. Fowler?
Well, we're going to be sending some contracts, we're in the process of drafting contracts for each individual street to come to council instead of the way it was done for Easton. What we want is a little more definition to the contract so that the contractor is then held to a warranty in the future. So I just want to make sure that you all are aware that because we made that decision last council meeting, I'm hopeful I can just, once I get the contracts drafted, we can get them to council and move them along because of the urgency to get this project continued, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and as I recall, Mr. Karen, I just want to, I think it was council's general consensus that we go ahead and pave these streets to finish off that area. So next step, I guess, is...
Right, and that's, I just wanted, again, I wanted to have this discussion to follow up on, to kind of better under, make sure that we're all on the same page as to how we're moving forward, and to say that when we bring an ordinance that says we're going to enter into a contract for Brookside, and then we're going to enter into a contract for Little, and that we're going to enter into a contract for Shellheart, that everybody's clear as to why we've kind of maybe been a little different with how we've approached that.
Right.
If I could ask, the numbers that are listed previously that we have in this packet, as those still stand, are those likely to change?
I may allot a small portion for contingency, just in case they run into something, like a 10% contingency, which is commonplace in construction contracts, and that way we don't have to come back if there be, you know, they find an area that they have to fix. Now, I know Mr. Kernan had brought up Shellheart. I don't anticipate that with Shellheart, obviously, because our road crew has that on their agenda to coordinate with the pavers to do some full-depth reclamation. But my concern is with Little and Brookside, I'm not, I don't have that time to do all three, and I'd like to have a little contingency in there to address anything that might arise during the construction of those three, two, Brookside and Little.
Good, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mr. Fowler? You don't have time, what'd you say?
I'm worried about the street department having time to do, one, full-depth reclamation on Shellheart, and then subsequently going to Little and Brookside and making sure that the pavement is in good repair. I think one of the questions that Mr. Kernan had addressed, or had brought to us last meeting, was the state of the road between Little Boulevard and Easton on Shellheart. And the street department is going to, they're preparing to do full-depth reclamation and do some significant road prep work there. Because they're going to do that 600 to 800 feet of prep work, I'm concerned that they won't have the time to do the Little and Brookside, because I felt like the Shellheart construction, full-depth repair, was a priority. And, one, we kind of know the state of that situation. And so I was going to allot for a 10% contingency just to make sure that we cover any unforeseen circumstances during the road pavement, if that makes sense.
There was a, there was a discussion, if I remember right, and we talked about this before, about, I guess you'd call a lateral, installing a lateral on the north side of, if I'm not, if I'm wrong, tell me, on the north side of Shellheart, from the sewer line that's presently there, or going to be there if it's not there already, over two, so you could have a future sewer line to go down Little cul-de-sac and Brookside cul-de-sac, you know what I'm saying, so we didn't have to go across Shellheart again for future expansion of the sewer lines. I know I'm not in the same opinion as everybody else here, but I'm willing to go along with voting for the paving and everything, just like everybody else has talked about. I just feel that we're sort of missing an opportunity to do something with sewers on that side of Shellheart, because in the future, there's going to be, as far as I can tell, there's going to be some expansions in that general area, north and west, that might benefit us to have a sewer line on the other side of Shellheart that we didn't have to tear up Shellheart. And I don't mean just run it down willy-nilly down a residential street and force people to hook in or anything, but if we have the ability to not destroy the streets, why couldn't we put one on the west side of Little and maybe the east side of Brookside, a lateral, that if anybody on either one of those streets ever wanted to hook in, then they could all say, petition and say, we want that line ran down through there, and we wouldn't have to destroy Shellheart again, for sure. And the only place we would have to destroy Little or Brookside would be such a small amount because of the location of the homes on both streets. If you look at the maps, you'll see there's more on the west side of Little, and there's more on the east side of Brookside. So I would suggest that we think about at least putting a lateral under Shellheart to the north side and being able, for future expansion, but that's, maybe that can't be done, I don't know.
Mr. Fowler?
I believe that's what they call stub, that we'd be stubbing in the line. I will confirm, I know there are certain areas of the project that we did some stubs prior. There were some thoughts on that, and I apologize, I don't recall all the discussion that we had on the stubs, but I will try to make sure we mitigate or minimize any pavement disruption.
Thank you.
Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. Kernan. Mr. Gainer, I'm thinking we already have a lateral on Little for the mayor's property.
No, not on Little cul-de-sac. That's on the other side of Shellheart.
Well, he is on the cul-de-sac end.
Pardon?
He is on the, on the north side of Shellheart, on Little.
There's a sewer line over there?
On the lateral. Well, we have one going to his property because he had opted to tie in.
I don't even know where the mayor lives, then.
Oh, yeah, he's on the corner of Shellheart and Little.
He's on the Little cul-de-sac.
So he is on the north side?
Yes.
So there is a...
Yeah, there will be a lateral there.
I thought he was on the other side.
No. And, but I don't know about Brookside, if somebody down there opted in or not. I don't remember the map now.
Well, I'm completely confused, then. I thought that we, I thought that we were discussing running a sewer line down Little cul-de-sac, north side of Shellheart, and down north side of Shellheart.
276, before.
Yeah, toward 76.
Yes.
And you're saying that there's, the mayor has a home on Little cul-de-sac, so there's, he's one person who's going to be hooking in for sure.
But we're not running a sewer line.
Pardon?
We're not running the sewer line down Little because he's just going to have the lateral coming across the street, like anybody else on the French, yes.
Okay, he's on the corner, but it'll be on the north side of Shellheart?
Yes.
Where he hooks in at?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that would, that would pretty much take care of what I'm talking about on Little, then, but I would suggest the same thing on Brookside, because we know there's nobody on Brookside that's hooking up. They weren't even in the original project, right?
Right, right. One of the things, I think, part of the discussion we had the last time about this was a time factor, too. I believe that we're probably up against it as far as trying to add something like that to this project at this point. Correct or not, Mr. Fowler, you're nodding over this.
Well, I would say any changes to the project would be very difficult. I think, aside from installing a T, because I don't exactly know where the sewer line crosses Shellheart there, aside from installing a little, like I said, a stub, I think we could do a stub.
So...
I just think...
Correct me if I'm, because I don't know. A stub would just be, you're going to take a line across the road and stop it right there?
Essentially, we'd put in a T and run it across the road and stop it right there.
Stop it there, put a cap on it, and it's there.
Put a cap on it and leave it for future.
I mean, that's something that I think would make sense to take a look at, so that it, you know, it takes care of the concern that Mr. Gainer brought up as far as tearing up the road. If we get it done before we do that, that's something that would make, I think, a lot of sense to maybe look.
For me, it's just going to be the cost, right?
Right.
What is the amount of the cost to do that?
Well, now that I understand, we're, you're talking about with the mayor, then there has to be a lateral over there anyway to pick him up. So like he said, a T to the left and a T to the right actually would be, I mean, nothing to put in.
So we could take a look at that, Mr. Fowler, with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a further question as far as more into the road part. It's my assumption that the idea is to use the same company, I believe it's RUDSEC, to do these three roads.
RUDSEC has a subcontractor that they contract to do the paving. They do not have paving in-house.
Okay.
But yes, we would be using the same paving contractor that did Easton.
Would it be worthwhile to have another quote done on those three?
We did that before, we'd be glad to do that. I think we did that before, and it was, but I'll get you two more quotes, won't be a problem. Before it comes, before the contracts come to council, I will have at least two more quotes to show.
I really appreciate that.
So at this point...
Nothing further, I don't believe, nothing we can do.
Just put it, we'll put it on unfinished business again on the next work.
Till we know more.
Yep, okay. All right. Anything else on that before we move on? All right. Letter B, chapter 258, employee benefits. Mr. Towesley, that's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Kernan. This, I'm just going to turn over to Mr. Fowler, the changes that I made. I know there's a lot that are just grammatical, changing, written-out words to letters or vice versa, and stuff like that, so if you wouldn't mind if you could just hit the pertinent points?
I'll just go section by section.
Okay, great.
25801, Mr. Messner, Mr. Markey, the mayor and I have done some, more so, Mr. Messner, can't take credit for his efforts there. He contacted our insurance carrier. Our insurance carrier does have dishonesty bonds for all employees. So, one, it does cost us money to have those bonds, so what we thought was a reasonable compromise is having Ron and the clerks who handle money bonded at those rates, and then we'd have a blanket dishonesty bond under our insurance policy for $100,000 for everybody You can see the changes that were made, if anybody thinks questions on...
I've got just a quick question.
Yeah.
Does that financially help the city by reducing some of those other ones, or eliminating some of those other ones? Is it kind of a wash?
Saves us money.
Does it?
Yeah. Not, nothing earth-shaking, but it does, in my estimation, every little bit helps.
Right, sure.
Ron, just correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it was like $400 or $600 per bond. So, you know, we're going from one, two, three, you know, down to, really, two. We're eliminating three, so we save a little bit of money, not all great savings, but anyhow. And we still have the coverage under our health, or, I'm sorry, our liability.
Yeah, anything like Mr. Messner said, anything we can do is a positive.
Is this, I mean, is this kind of the setup that most cities go with, is to bond specifically the director of finance and the account clerks, and then just have a blanket? I mean, I would assume that's almost places to do it.
Historically, it's anybody who handles money, right? I mean, and...
With note, we no longer have the clerk of courts, and so the mayor and administrative officer don't handle money on behalf of the city, so it doesn't make sense to have separate bonds for them. Part of the bonding requirement is to make sure that the person handling the money is capable of receiving a bond. I mean, that's part of the reason you get a bond.
Right.
So if they're not handling the cash, though, then we're not as concerned about it.
Okay.
Under overtime compensation, we, I believe we discussed this last council meeting, one of our discussions is to move the street department to four tens in the summer. Under this provision, any summer help that we're to be working with our street department would be getting overtime when our street department would not. So it just allows us to pay a straight 40 hours for those employees. Any questions on 2502, 25802, 25803? Essentially, what I've done is I've eliminated the scale, the longevity scale, talking to Pam, the person that handles payroll. We have a couple different longjevities. I put the police chief to receive the police longevity, which he currently does, and all other members to get the, let's see, one, the fire will get the fire longevity, which is the same as AFSCME, and all other non-bargaining personnel get the AFSCME. It's essentially just reducing the language, and essentially, we don't have to update that when changes are made at the collective bargaining agreement. Any questions on longevity?
It's kind of, in, for my simple mind on this, it's kind of like a Me Too clause.
Essentially, that's what it is. I mean, there is no increase in compensation with these changes.
Right.
It's only to make it a little more simple in the way it's written. I know it may not look that way, but the goal is to be more simplistic. The next section is holidays, 25804. Again, if there would be a change in the collective bargain agreement, not that there is, and we're still, while we're still in process of that, if there would have been a change to the collective bargain agreement, we would have had to come back and adjust these for the other personnel. So the thought was to just mirror the full-time, non-bargaining personnel to get the AFSCME holidays, which we have currently. The police and fire chief would then still get their, or, non-bargaining, or they would get their holiday pay, or whatever, whatever we call that. And again, it still excludes the administrative officer.
Yeah, I just want to comment, because I've had a couple comments from residents, because they're asking, we just changed that months ago, why are we again? And all we're doing is changing other than to excluding.
Right.
So it's just fixing the wording a little bit.
Right, that's, it's just a word change.
Same exact...
Same, yeah. Benefits do not change, so...
I just want to kind of point that out.
I just, and I felt like the excluding kind of, kind of put it out there that you don't get that. It was a little more defined, again. It was a little more defined again. Under sick leave, we change... We're going to an hours rather than days. While I understand that the Ohio Municipal League has put out a bulletin that indicates the state may be making adjustments to the amount of sick leave a municipal employee or any government employee can accumulate, until that's done, I'm kind of just going to leave it at ten hours for now, and we'll make any adjustments as needed. In Section B, I think we changed it from hours. I think it was days. Yeah, it was a hundred and twenty days. I put it to hours. So as there's no confusion, if someone says they work a longer day than eight, just to change that. One of the things we're asking council to consider is upon death, you would get your sick leave. We were asking for anybody who retires in a state retirement system, who has accumulated sick time at the city, to be paid out the one-tenth for every year of service, up to ten, up to a hundred percent. So if you've completed five years and retired, you get fifty percent of your allotted time. The one other change that was... Should be articulated in here is, under the statute, an employee who works for another governmental agency in the state of Ohio, a political subdivision, by law is allowed to transfer sick time. There were some questions of whether or not we could do that. This clears that up. However, I want to make one point, that at no time should an employee who transfers sick time into the city of Norton, they would not receive any payout on sick time that's transferred in. It strictly only payout on the time that you received while working here. Sometimes that number can be substantial, and I think we wanted to make that clear that, yes, we'll accept your time, but you cannot be paid out for any of that time.
So you can't bring nine hundred and sixty hours of sick time in and then retire and get paid?
Right. That's... We're going to prevent that. Mostly, in the first few here, for bereavement leave, it's just some grammatical changes, days, employees, immediate family. There's really no substantive changes there. If there's any questions on the bereavement leave. Special leave, I think, doesn't appear to be any changes there. Vacation, it's the same. We went from... Essentially, we scratched the numbers and put in written on some of these. Fix a couple of those. We wanted to clear up on B. I think I see a plus the year's accrual. One of the lines in there say you get... You can accrue one year of vacation, but there is a line in there where it used to say that you can only take vacation after a year. So from my perspective, there was a concern that if I'm employee A, I'm accumulating vacation right now. Use me for an example. I accumulate vacation to August. I'm still going to accumulate vacation in August, and just to clarify, we wanted to say that you could have that one year vacation plus the other year. Just make sure that's clear. Oh, I missed one section here. Vacation leave, we just put in a paraded schedule for vacation for part-time employees. Well, this won't be applicable to anybody currently. We're in the process of making a transition here. But we felt like we should offer a benefit to our part-time employees who, like Vivian, had worked here for extensive period of time and received no benefit like that. We did... We did put a provision in there, transforming... You may take sick leave, like Larry, for example, and me. Larry was unable to take vacation. He can, if this passes, be able to take it within six months. Injury leave, just a few grammatical corrections there to two fifty-eight oh nine. Two fifty-eight point oh nine five, military leave. Just a few minor, putting your thirty-two... Or thirty-one, twenty-two, hundred and seventy-six hours correction on military. And you can see the stat... The change to employees while on military leave, in excess of thirty-one days are not entitled to accumulate employee benefits. Two fifty-eight ten is absent without leave. We changed it to one hour before start. One, if the employee started at eight and didn't tell us till noon they weren't coming in, we just wanted to make sure that that was clear. They needed to tell us an hour before the start. And we just changed dismissal to termination. We just felt like an hour seemed to be reasonable amount of time for someone to let us know they weren't coming to work. Again, this does not supersede bargaining agreement. Those are separate from this, but these are all the employees who are covered under this ordinance. Pay... Two fifty-eight eleven is pay while on jury duty. You can see the employee... It says employee service, there's a little correction, and then workday. Just a few grammatical changes. There was no substantive changes. I don't think we did anything with tuition reimbursement. We kind of left it the way it was.
Excuse me. Let me interrupt you right there before you get started on that. I do have a question on tuition reimbursement. It starts out at A or equivalent one hundred percent, B or equivalent eighty percent, then it goes to C or equivalent sixty percent. Then it says satisfactory or equivalent one hundred percent. I don't understand that.
So sometimes classes are pass/fail, meaning you don't get an A, B, C, D grade. They are pass or fail. So that would indicate that someone who takes a pass/fail class, they would be in receipt of a hundred percent because they passed the course. They would get a hundred percent reimbursement for the course.
But they got no A, B, or C?
But they passed it because the course didn't offer them an A, B, or C.
Okay. I understand it then. I'd never heard of that, so that's fine.
Really, just some grammatical changes in there. Otherwise, there were very limited changes to the provision of tuition reimbursement. Travel allowances. The one thing you'll notice in these ordinances that I try to achieve is automatic... I say this, automatic increases, but so as that I don't have to keep coming back. Well, now the food allotment's ten dollars more. So I put in, in this ordinance specifically, the GSA per diem, so as that when a police officer would travel to Canton or something, I know Canton's close, where he wouldn't be staying overnight, but at Columbus, they'd be overnight for training, that the GSA defines how much an employee should receive for meals and hotels. And so we just felt like it was an easy solution, so as it, you know, is fifty dollars enough, you know? We just want to make sure that... And in fact, some cases, it might be less. I know some places are forty-five. But it should be dependent on where you travel and the cost of the location. Those are the... And again, we excluded alcohol purchases, so the city does not pay for an employee's alcohol while on city business. Any other questions on travel? Or any questions on travel? Two fifty-eight fourteen is our affirmative action program. The one substantive change that was made was we included in G and designee or designee so that the mayor, administrative officer, or designee, in case we would identify someone that is our EEOC compliance officer. So just wanted some flexibility in that regard. There's also some grammatical changes in the document there. Two fifty-eight fifteen is the high deferred compensation. We changed the language here, essentially C, because it's been in effect since eighty-nine, so there's no reason to further have that language. It's clearly fully in... It's hereby fully written herein. Any questions on the deferred comp... We do not pay for the employees. That's an option for the employees. They choose, they elect, and they make their contributions without our knowledge. We just withhold it from their paychecks and make the deposits for them. So there is no contribution or cost to the city for doing that, other than the payroll time. Two fifty-eight sixteen has to do with pensions. This language is... Brings us more in line with what we're doing in the payroll department, so as there are a few changes here, but it just articulates more how we're operating in the city. Clarifies the language, so some ambiguity in that language. Two fifty-eight seventeen is the same, just some for O-Pers employees, discusses how we handle the employees' pension contributions, in terms of being tax deductible, et cetera. Any questions on our pension wording? Two fifty-eight eighteen, one of the things we're leaning towards is eliminating city cell phones or reducing them as much as possible. One of the ideas is to offer a stipend for your personal cellphone, which we would offer fifty dollars, and the employee be responsible for all maintenance, care, et cetera, of their cellphone. Just kind of bring your own device to the workplace. Looking at it potentially to save us money. We're in the review stages of that presently, but that's the change for two fifty-eight eighteen. And then Ron's request, he had one request in this whole document, and two fifty-eight nineteen is Ron's request that everything is hereby done by direct deposit. So all compensation at Ron's request will be done by direct deposit, and it just makes sense, but that is the one request that Ron had in the entire document. If you have any questions about the language, please send it to me. I'd be glad to, you know, address any questions you may have.
Any?
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. If nobody else has more questions beyond that, then I will make a motion to move... This is going to be ordinance number eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, to the next council meeting. Is that right, eighteen? It doesn't seem right. I don't know what the number's going to be. Can we assign that later, or...
We can assign it later.
This particular ordinance...
It should be eleven, but I would just assign it. Whatever the number is, you just move the ordinance and...
Okay, so I make a motion to move this forward to the next council meeting.
That would be first reading?
Yes, for first reading, please.
Just need a second from either Mr. Karrant or Mr. Gainer.
One second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. Karrant?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
All right. Letter C. Appointment to the mosquito abatement district advisory council was supporting legal opinion, clarifying membership eligibility. There's nobody assigned to that, so we'll call that personnel. Mr. Towesley?
Thank you, Mr. Kernan.
I know you're happy about that.
I guess we had spoken about this last week or last time, and from my understanding, I don't mean to speak for you, Mr. Gainer, but you were leaning toward accepting this. Do you have any...
Yes, I'm ready to accept it. But I just wanted to see if you'd come up with... Justin would come up with a written opinion on the...
Yeah, I'd sent an email to council the Tuesday... Two weeks ago, whatever that Tuesday was. I can resend it. Perhaps I didn't get your email on it, but essentially quoting the statute and discussing that need to be an employee, which to me means someone is on the payroll as an employee, not a volunteer... Not a volunteer member, but a paid committee member or commission member, board of commission member.
Yeah, I seen that. My only question was... Well, a lot of questions, but the way I read what you sent and the way I read the rules of the MAD district and everything, one person, correct me if I'm wrong, that's on the MAD board must be a city employee of either Barberton or Norton.
Or an employee of the Health District, Simi County Health District.
Of the Health District.
It could be one employee from any of those three, Barberton, Norton, or Health District.
Can I add in here?
Yes.
The Health District has actually went to the court and asked to be removed from being in the MAD district, and this was several years ago.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you how the statute reads, right?
Okay, so presently, is what I'm getting at, is presently, the way I understand it, there's no one on the MAD board of directors that is a member or employee of either Barberton, Norton, or the Health District.
I don't know who the members are, but that's my understanding.
That's my latest email that I got from them. So if that's the case, if I'm right, we as the advisory to the MAD district, since I would be on that advisory board, what do I advise them and how do I go about advising them that they're not meeting the ORC on the fact that they do not have a member on the board that's a city employee from either city?
May I?
Absolutely. I feel like I have the floor, yeah, absolutely.
Why wouldn't he be the employee if he's appointed? He's paid by the city.
But he's not a member of the... He's not a member... He is an appointing authority for the board that has a requirement that they have an employee of the city. So he's the overseer and then...
I see, okay.
Us three people who are going to be on that board, whoever they may be, and I'll be one of them, I guess, have the... The way I read all the directions and everything that I've been given, we have the job or the job description to appoint and to advise, not force, but advise, the MAD district directors as to what they should do and how they should conduct this and that, and especially financial. And so there's presently, since Mr. Webb passed away, there's presently one person who needs to be appointed. And I don't know, it's just a confusing situation as to how do I advise a board to do something that I already know they're, in my opinion, they're violating ORC code. They're not... They don't have a member on there that's a... That is an employee. So how do you correct that legally?
So a couple things. First is that they do have their own legal counsel, right? So it's tough to combat that if you're a member of the district advisory council, that if they have legal counsel, it's giving different advice, you know? Then you have two lawyers with different opinions, which happens all the time, but all you can do is just advocate your position. I would say it's probably, and I'm happy to talk about now if you want, it's probably something that's more appropriate, probably off-the-floor counsel, just to talk about, you know, how you fulfill your role as a member of the district advisory council. Probably not good to go on and on if you do want to have some legal arguments to give them to do it here.
Okay.
I'm happy to take your call, whenever.
So then from there, do we need to take a roll call and vote?
This would just be done by motion second and vote of the whole council appointing him, or just the committee, or it would be the whole council?
I would do the whole council. Yeah, I would take a motion and vote for the whole council.
Okay.
Okay, well, then I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Gainer to the DAC.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Karrant? Call the roll.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. Karrant?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Gainer.
While we're kind of on the MAD subject...
Yes. Yes.
And it's unfinished business. I have the draft letter that we discussed since last year to be sent down to our legislators concerning the revised code six one one five three two one, basically stating that we want to retain the right to be able to get rid of the MAD district if we so. We could petition to do so. So I wanted to pass that out to council now. So you have copies of it, and hopefully we'll all be signing this, as well as the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How quickly are we looking for a signature? I just wonder if I need to read it over right now?
Well, this says draft on it, so I think we're gonna have to-
Oh, I got you, okay.
I just wanted to make sure that you all had looked at it, and then, Mrs. McComber will, do you have one ready?
I have the original ready, yeah.
All right. Okay. Perhaps what we can do is, um, you can put it in a folder out here if you're not here, and then if somebody stops and wants to sign it, give us a couple days to look at it, maybe make any suggestions, and then we'll go from there. Is that acceptable? Okay. All right, anything else, uh, under C or under unfinished business? Any other unfinished business?
Unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Gaynor.
Give me a second here, please. I wanted to ask, uh, and I guess this would be something that would be referred to the next committee work session. I've spoke to, uh, because of an article I read in the Beacon Journal about the way, uh, a certain judge in Akron handles their, uh, drug violators. They send them to the Greenleaf, uh, Family Center, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
So, out of my own curiosity, I contacted Judge McKinney and asked him if he had read the article and if he, um, how he handles his people compared to the way they do. And he said, he told me in a follow-up email that he also, in his court, you know, he is the drug judge, that he does the same thing. He sends them, or has a contract or whatever with Greenleaf. And I asked him if he, with council's permission, would be interested in giving a presentation to council and the public here, come in and give it, to, uh, explain how he, to explain how he does handle his drug court people that he sends to these programs and things. I thought it would be of interest to council, um, and to the general public. And, uh, Judge McKinney puts on a really good presentation normally when he does. So I'd like to suggest that we either discuss it, or move on it and contact, maybe have Carrie make an appointment with him sometime in the future to, um, to check his schedule and see when he could come in, if that's all right with everybody else on council. Because I think it would be an excellent presentation for him.
I, I mean, I certainly don't have a problem anytime judge or other official wants to come in and, and give us, um, a report like that. Maybe what we can do is have, um, the clerk of council contact Judge McKinney and see what his schedule's like for the next few Mondays. And then, uh, Mr. Pilot can decide based on that when to schedule him into, I mean, it could either be a council meeting, or it could be a work session. I think it fits under either one. Would that work?
That's fine with me, yes. Uh, and I have a couple other things if we're done with that.
Anything else on that?
No. I'm, I'm good with that. If that's all right with everybody.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I, I wanted to ask, um, uh, first of all, 'cause I know it won't take long, about a Wolf Creek watershed update. Mr. Fowler, do you, or the mayor, or anybody, have you heard anything else as far as, uh, procedure or anything? What's going on with it?
I, I don't have all those details, so.
Okay.
Could we maybe get a report the next time?
Yeah, I know it was filed in court, right? That's, that's what, the extent of our knowledge.
Right, a while back, but that was placed on hold, and, yeah.
Okay. Now, maybe we can just get a, an update the next time.
Right.
Either a council or a work session.
Sure.
And if everybody's done with that, uh, also, since we're on Wolf Creek, I had Brenda Halas called me not too long ago and asked me about a, something she had interest in. There's a business, I don't think there's any reason to mention the name of the business, but the business is, uh, owns a property on the edge of Wolf Creek. And they're, they're filling in, or they were filling in, I think they're completed now, under a, uh, Department of the Army Corps of Engineers permit to fill in an area there. And her and I, her and I was out there one day, and, uh, Charlotte went with me one day and looked at it. And if, if you look at it, it's, uh, these things are pretty hard to read and understand, but, there's a lot of, um, what am I saying? There's a lot of, uh, criteria involved in the way that was supposed to be filled. I have no idea, they might have done a perfect job, but I feel that they have encroached on the creek more than what they should have been allowed to. If they, if they were allowed to encroach on that creek the way they did, then something's wrong with the Army Corps of Engineers permitting process. Because there are stones that have tumbled down the hill and fallen into the creek. It's, it, it, I don't have pictures before, but it's an obvious, when you look at it, that the creek has been narrowed by the fill on their side and the fill on the other side, which happened previously, I don't know when. But it, it has narrowed Wolf Creek down there at the bridge at two sixty-one and Barber Road. It's narrowed it down quite a bit. And because of the weed overgrowth and everything, you can't really tell how much. But I would like to suggest that maybe Mr. White could follow up on that. I, I got these permits from him, and he said since they had permits, he really didn't seem to indicate that he had any, uh, authority or whatever to do anything about it, even if it was wrong. So I, I would like somebody to follow up on this, if possible. Uh, maybe, I, I don't know, I would think that Mr. White would be the person to contact. He suggested I contact the Corps of Engineers, but I'm just not capable of discussing it with the Corps of Engineers. So I would suggest that Mr. White have a meeting at the bridge with the Corps of Engineers, and maybe, I don't care, I'm myself, or I'd be happy to go there and see what they say on it. Uh, and if I could settle the fact, if the Corps of Engineers says they did a great job, and, and, uh, you know, it's all done properly and everything, then I can go back to Mrs. Halas, who brought it to my attention to start with. And since then, there's been two other people ask me about it. Then I would be happy to say to them, there's not much you can say, you know, it's done properly. But I'd like to have somebody follow up on that, Mr. Fowler, if that's possible. And I, I'm done.
Any other unfinished business to come before council? Mr. Karant?
Just one thing, uh, nothing too earth-shattering. Since two thousand nine, August two thousand nine, I've been representing our city on the county board of health, and I was just recently reappointed, uh, by the mayor. I've been making approximately quarterly reports, and now things, uh, if I'm sitting on this side of that counter out there, it's a little bit different. Should I talk to Mr. Pilot, or do we schedule that for times? I would probably do the first of this year to do one. But I, my learning curve has really gone up since I sat on this side. So, um, how should I approach that now?
I, I mean, I, I would just suggest that you, that you talk with Mr. Pilot, and he can just, whenever you're prepared to do that, um, just have you do it under reports from officers, boards, and commissions, or whatever it is, officers and-
Is that usually the city council, then, in our work session?
Yeah.
Okay. Good, thank you.
All right. Any other unfinished business?
I'm sorry, I forgot what-
Mr. Gaynor?
Won't take long, I promise. Mr. Fowler, what's the status of the house on Hayne Street?
The teardown house is gone.
Day after Christmas. It was demolished the day after Christmas.
I'm sorry? It was?
Demolished the day after Christmas.
Okay. I, it wasn't the last time I was up there, okay.
Are we talking this, which, which home are we?
The end of Hayne Street by the park.
Yeah, it's been down since December twenty-
Okay, right.
Take care of that.
Any other unfinished business? All right. Any new business to come before council? All right, topics for next work session, we have the ones that we moved earlier. We'll also be talking, I guess, about appointments to boards and commissions. Um, was there any public, did anybody sign up?
No.
Okay. All right, having nothing else, um, just to let everyone know, we are gonna have a special council meeting immediately following this one. Will take about five or ten minutes, um, to refill your coffee or do whatever you need to do. Um, so we'll come back here at eight thirty. And hearing nothing else to come before council for the work session, we're adjourned.
Just to remind everybody, the tape is still running.
Good job, Karen. I forgot. Oh, boy. Rob. So, um, what's going, you, you, you're in pain?
Just sitting too long.
Did you see my email about that house anyway?
I did. Bill went out there.
There, there's no complaints, so there's nothing we can do.
Bill even went out there this weekend with the snow. There was no footprints. There's no cat prints, so what I suggested is they just call the owner.
I'm going to be-
No, Bill's gonna do it.
Okay.
He's gonna reach out to the owner.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, come on. This is the, this is the house I was talking about today.
It's really weird, they said no one's ever lived for fifteen years. Isn't that weird? All right. But I, I, we've had no other complaints on that house, right?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, we all go together?
No.
They're going on their own.
Hey, Jack.
I'll give you the email, maybe you can call the guy. And just, Bill's gonna call the owner. I guess the house no one's lived here for fifteen years, on Hartzell.
There's just simply a vacant house.
It's just a vacant house, and I went by it, it's, it, I mean, he pays his taxes. He does everything, I looked at him, everything, he's doing everything, he mows his grass, but he still lives there. But he lives on Vanderhof. So Bill's gonna talk to the owner. I'm gonna maybe tell him, and I'll give you the email here.
Okay.
And, uh, really, it's an Englishman, he's a really nice guy. I was talking to him, he goes, "I'd love to meet you sometime." So, and there's, um, I also gave you, that, that's the guy, that's the gentleman's name, his name's Chris. He lives two, uh, horse houses down from the vacant house.
I don't remember seeing this at all.
Yeah, that was February eleventh. I kind of would copy you, but, but I, what I did was I gave you the property ta, I gave you the, uh, that was, that's when the guy bought it. That's, that's, the guy's name's Edward Carr. And then I gave you the tax bill, which, he's paying everything. So, really, you can't do nothing, the guy was paying his tax bill, and he's mowing the grass.
The complaint was about cats.
He, he, he claims there's a lot of, you know, cats roaming around the neighborhood.
This guy?
No, his neighbor. His neighbor was, yeah. This is the house that's vacant. You, you can drive by, you'll see, no one lives here. It's just, it's, and you know, Hartzell is not that bad of a road. I've been to have a vacant house here in Old Minnesota. I don't know. No. And then when you drive by, you'll see, the garage's never been open because there's a big pile of stuff right in front of it. You'll just have to drive, being my wife real bad, it's just funny. It's just funny, we just go by it. Yeah, you, you can have that. Yeah, if you can give him a call, he, just, he wanted to meet me, and I said, "You know what? I'll just give it to you, and I mean, maybe you can meet him or something." And tell him what's happening, but I just talk to Robert, uh, and just tell him that, um-
Right.
Who's our-
I don't know, did you see that email?
Tell him, it's Bill, Bill.
Yeah, go right.
Bill's gonna, Bill's gonna go talk to the owner and see if he can tell him. So you can tell him that too, so.
All right, well, there.
So really, everything's all handled, maybe you just call him and follow up with him and just tell him.
Ask the email, somebody's been-
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Didn't answer, that scares me.
Well, it's clear it's not twelve feet, I hate the bell. That's every bit of twenty feet. And I just don't think you, I'm gonna go scan and email that.
They couldn't work on, they're the most difficult things.
This is, this is-
Oh, you know, it's just, it is what it is.
Right here, no, no.
They parked the tractor here.
Okay, it's on the, it's on the grass. You mean the guy that they're doing the road?
Yeah.
Oh, and he's mad, he's mad because they shot it down. He thinks it's on their property.
He thinks it's on his property.
With absolutely no uncertainty, so they even sent out anything made by that place. You need to not use it and go get new prescriptions and film somewhere else. So, it's like, there's probably about three pharmacies that are like me. That are catching-
And in all pharmacies, they did cut a tree.
Well, medications.
Yeah. They had to bring in a special piece of-
So it's-
Get it out.
Which is huge.
Yeah, it's overwhelming. I'm, I'm dead.
I understand why it's special. So I explained to them.
I only have one technician out front, and everybody else-
That right, this house right here, stepbrother's house. Oh, this one on the corner. Yeah, it was.
Yeah, pretty much. I had to tell a couple people, I'll just have them call back tomorrow.
You don't wanna like-
No, I can't help people. I got doctors calling, news-
I know, because one of our renters complained he has an upper ring, it was three hundred and ten dollars one month.
A hundred K's expensive.
It is. Does that's electric heat over there?
And that's, and I'm not gonna say that's what he did. He was sloppy. It hurts because I, I got him started in a-
Let me ask you, did you get that email the other day, then?
And then he went off and did his own thing. Which is doing, I thought, really well. It gives the pharmacy a black eye. It's kinda like if you're a police officer, and some officer does some- It's kind of like if you're a police officer and some officer does some dumb thing, y'all look bad.
Right, right.
You know, it just isn't good.
So you don't...
No, I, I'm happy to do the extra business, but the way I got it is just...
The guy came back, because I don't know what you're talking about. I don't even know what I thought I could do. I wonder if it's Scott's new cellphone.
I don't know.
He told me not to go in.
I'm chair lawyer.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get moving on the special council meeting. I now call a special council meeting of Norton City Council from Monday, February fifth, two thousand and eighteen, to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gainer?
Here.
Mr. McLoane?
Here.
Mr. Karrant?
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Mr. Pilot?
Mr. Pilot's excused tonight. Under new business committee of the hall, anything for committee of the hall? Under introduction to prior legislation, ordinance two, two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Karrant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer the second reading of our ordinance two, twenty eighteen.
Ordinance two, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of agreements with Kinstall Sterling Western Stark Truck Center for the lease purchase of a two thousand and eighteen Western Star forty-seven zero zero S B tandem axle, I S L three seventy H P, and declaring an emergency.
That's a mouthful, isn't it?
Thank you. I'd like to move to waive the third reading.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Karrant?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. McLoane?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt two, twenty eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Karrant?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. McLoane?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. And there being no further business to come before council for the special council meeting, Fifth, two thousand and eighteen, to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For the clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gainer?
Here.
Mr. McLoane?
Here.
Mr. Karrant?
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Mr. Pilot?
Mr. Pilot's excused tonight. Under new business committee of the hall, anything for committee of the hall? Under introduction to prior legislation, ordinance two, two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Karrant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer the second reading of our ordinance two, twenty eighteen.
Ordinance two, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of agreements with Kinstall Sterling Western Stark Truck Center for the lease purchase of a two thousand and eighteen Western Star forty-seven zero zero S B tandem axle, I S L three seventy H P, and declaring an emergency.
That's a mouthful, isn't it?
Thank you. I'd like to move to waive the third reading.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Karrant?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. McLoane?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt two, twenty eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Karrant?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. McLoane?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. And there being no further business to come before council for the special council meeting, the meeting's adjourned.